I got her at the break. Heard her, bud.
Yeah, my husband. Right here.
Oh, really? Great.
I said it's a chair, I know.
I think that's good for sure. I thought you wanted. It's Carter here.
Anyway, now this conversation is a little messy.
And I told Patrick this, that you knew his father.
I knew his father.
Yes, Art was his father. I wasn't sure if that was his.
Yeah, I knew he was. He was. I guess he gave me some.
Alex, we're done.
Hey there. Beer, help.
All right, Dominic. Sorry, buddy.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Great, yeah, I'm here to do some of that next week. She had a dill over the back too. She had a dill over the top of her tongue and learned. We had a heartbreak earlier. We had a game with this two other couples. Yeah, we had a game. Have fun? Ever dreamt of that? Yes. Always so much.
Yep.
Have fun.
We'll see you later.
If you're on the play. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. My dad, my mom. Where are you going? Sure, that's a cover. Yeah. One is actually by. Yes, no. The hardest thing to do is, I went to another kind of a. Okay. Okay. That's what I do. Not sure I watch that. I don't want to. So, you see, like, oh, yes, no, thank you. So, okay. So. I wish I had a picture. Yeah. I want to see what it feels like from this chair.
Okay, I'll sit up here.
You look like a pro up there. Pretty good there, Chuck. Move into my board, because I may. Chuck, you'll sit up there. Oh, yeah. All right. All pretty good, Chuck? Cushy? Is it time, showtime yet?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I go next. I get that. Come on, Art. It's really, honestly, now.
Yeah.
Where you going?
I was just in West Virginia.
That's okay. It's still there. I know it.
Oh, no, the stones don't work there. So, even if they were to take it, they can.
Yeah. Okay, I'd like to call a word. The North Canton City Council meeting Monday, July 7 p.m., hopefully in prayer. Lord, again, thank you for bringing us here this evening. Thank you for this wonderful community, as you have given us, and given us the great responsibility to take care of what you have given us. Help us to do the best we can to look to your standards and help all the people in this area making the decisions that will make them want to live here, be happy to live here, and keep everybody safe and happy. God's name in prayer. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eaters.
Here.
Bolts.
Here.
Serrano.
Here.
The Bull.
Here.
Keesling. Here. Fonte.
Here.
Sixth President.
Thank you. Motion to excuse member where? Some move. A second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. If for your consideration, you motion the second to approve as presented in the whole minutes, June 17, 2019, special council meeting minutes, June 17, 2019.
Motion to approve as second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Clark, Tripp, 1127 East Maple, North Canton. In my opinion, the framework and mindset of this North Canton government, as we see it now, had the framework laid in 2017 with the election of Mr. Revolt, the council at large, joining Mr. Di Oriol, who was really just getting his feet wet as city administrator in creating this dynasty. It took a while to curb the likes of a city law director who would often tear his views on whatever and whenever he so desired, never be silenced by council president. Took a while for council to recognize that only meetings twice a month in a piggyback style was a display of irresponsible government leadership by council president. The next became more apparent in a much shorter time as we recognized Councilman Revolt as the leader of the city council meetings. Watch Council President Peters as he mumbles and jumbles during meetings, now looking to his left instead of to his right for guidance. Not much limelight now for the law director during council meetings, but darn, he continues to add his hidden, hidden his tidbits whenever possible, such as commenting of the great negotiating during the deep old talks, trying to downplay Mr. Osborne's comments that cities are being held hostage by big business. Yes, we have fought the 215 jobs being created, but make no mistake, companies do hold government hostage in meeting their bottom line and respectable dividends to their stockholders. If not, North Canton, the 17th most livable city in Ohio, would have a main street bustling without the need for income tax breaks, DRDs and CRAs. It's a competitive world, and companies take what a city gives, and if it meets their needs, they stay, or else they look elsewhere. Then we had his comment last week during the water rate discussion, and the fact that a city employee with the longest tenure and the highest pay is the individual selected to turn on one's water on after their shut off. Mr. Fox, so be it. That's called labor negotiation, and perhaps you were part of the negotiating team that allowed that clause to be in the contract. But you know, North Canton city residents, never once a negative comment from those sitting before me on paying a council member for missed needs. Another example of that. Never. Double standards? Perhaps. Double standards. Some members miss six, seven times a year, but we continue to pay them. Not one afterthought of spending $150,000 for the movement of council chambers to the city center and subsequent expenses for the mounting and dismantling of equipment to facilitate various functions. So, 2019, and I'm in an election year, we are here in the D and D era of North Canton city government. Figured out D and D. Good, bad, the verdict is still out. However, two major issues loom in the limelight under a cloth of secrecy, but should be the highlight, highlight of this year's election. Tonight, let's deal with DRDs and later, upon return from break, Arrowhead Golf Course. Mr. Revolt, earlier this year, you spoke of hostilities within council chambers as a negative factor for one seeking employment as a council clerk. Councilman Revolt, Peters, or any other council person voting for the approval of DRDs or CRAs, answer one question. How many location finders seeking cities for their clients may have been turned away from North Canton because of government's inability to work with their biggest assets, city schools? As reported by Stark County Political Report with information provided by school officials, whereas city has maintained silence, city officials walked away, in effect being labeled as hypocrites from a May 29 meeting. I might add my opinion with egg in their face also. Glad to see and read school officials making a stand against DRDs. Thank you. Had a great 4th of July function, not only the parade, but the event at the community church with a special tribute to Mr. Bacon, Sam Bacon, that was really a nice event. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Tucker, Austin, 1307 February Street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I have to commiserate with Mrs. Brown, frustrations with the people that, I guess repeatedly don't pay their bills and have to be shut off and then turned back on. To remedy that, I would suggest rather than jacking up the rate for everybody, putting something in there that repeated shut offs and turn ons for the same person, maybe over a given period of time, have a, an escalating turn on rate, rather than jacking it up for everybody. You obviously have got a situation where people are struggling to pay their bills, or in a workplace that fell through the cracks, but to raise that to $100, like I said, they could be rectified by adjusting that policy for repeat offenders. So, that's the first thing I would address. As far as the discontinuing of permit for cement, I, well, first let me back up to this. I talked to Mr. Serrano earlier. I had to remind him that four or five years ago, it was the goal of the spotty to make that department self-sufficient, so you jack up all the fees. They can be a little hefty sometimes. An example, I wanted to put, replace plaster and layer in a bedroom of mine at home, and I was going to do some electrical work at the same time. I knew I would have the electrical permit, but a judgment call, somebody said, well, you also need a construction permit as well. I'm simply removing the wall covering and putting up a like covering it up. What are they going to do? Come back and say, hey, that's a nice color that you put up? There was no reason for that construction permit requirement, but I, I didn't quote the fees, combined fees were like $170. Currently, more for the cost of my dryer. But I didn't quote. Cement is a major, major investment. It's very visible in the neighborhood. It's very costly. Homeowners need guidance. They need oversight from an independent party. To, to just remove the need for a permit is a long way to go. And now I hear from Mrs. Keesling, you're going to explore removing permits for other items in our code. They're going to make it so confusing, do I need a permit? Do I not need a permit? This is all the wrong way to go. You need people there who can seek guidance from the cities, some technical knowledge, and provide oversight. They should give you a drawing as to whether they're going to put this driveway or sidewalk, whatever it is, make them pick it as a replacement, make sure they're not going to expand it beyond the borders that are allowed. The city needs to have continued oversight of this. So, this is a long way to go. The ordinance, and I think, here was, is it 49, 2019, something? I never get a satisfactory explanation. You have already identified the dollar amount of money that you're moving. You must be moving it from a specific account to another account, so those full account numbers need to be detailed for the future, so you can track city finances. So, I still maintain the full account numbers, where it's coming from and where it's going to, need to be detailed on that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else question to address council? Okay, we see none, who will move on to whole business, may have a motion and a second to read by title only third reading, ordinance 45-19. Some move. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Tim.
In ordinance amendment, chapter 111, council codified ordinance to the city of North Canton, specifically section 111.01, means time, place, and recorded procedure by adding subsection J as described below.
Thank you, Chairman Fong.
Well, this ordinance and the one that follows it will receive a third reading vote tonight and reflect a change in the way we are modifying our rules of council. We're going to use the transcript, the council whole, as a committee report, and that's what 46, 2019 does. But the committee report form, which we have, in which we would use when the meeting is not transcribed, requires the committee chairman to list the members of the administration and other unelected city officials who are present, Director of Finance, Director of Law, etc. So, this is our way of making sure that the spirit of the original legislation, a committee reports is captured. Just kind of voting on this backwards, my view, but that's okay. So, if there aren't any questions, I would urge the adoption of, I move that we adopt the third reading of ordinance 45-19.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion and a second to read by title only third reading, ordinance number 46-19. Some move. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Tim.
In ordinance amendment, section 111, council codified ordinance to the city of North Canton, specifically section 111.06, council meeting agenda amended in subsections A and B as described above.
Chair of the line, I'll send the motion and second.
Let's do it.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only third reading, ordinance number 48-19. Some move. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
In ordinance amendment, section 24, authorized manpower ordinance number 10-89, police personnel ordinance as amended to allow for additional personnel as needed to fill positions receiving funding from outside sources.
Thank you. So, third reading, Chief Manock was here to address us, answered our questions. Does he have a comment on that? Can I motion? Good answer. Motion. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
In ordinance amendment, section 24, authorized manpower ordinance number 10-89, police personnel ordinance as amended to allow for additional personnel as needed to fill positions receiving funding from outside sources.
Thank you. So, third reading, Chief Manock was here to address us, answered our questions. Does he have a comment on that? Can I motion? Good answer. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
In ordinance amendment, section 111, council codified ordinance to the city of North Canton, specifically section 111.04, requesting the planning commission review, consider, and recommend, or not recommend, council's proposal to amend section 1181.08, action by city council regarding amended zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Chairman Keesling.
Yes, we are sending this off to planning to look at our recommendation to remove subsections B and C from that. Part of the ordinance is in conflict with section 2.05 in our charter. I motion to adopt.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Clark, Tripp, 1127 East Maple, North Canton. In my opinion, the framework and mindset of this North Canton government, as we see it now, had the framework laid in 2017 with the election of Mr. Revolt, the council at large, joining Mr. Di Oriol, who was really just getting his feet wet as city administrator in creating this dynasty. It took a while to curb the likes of a city law director who would often tear his views on whatever and whenever he so desired, never be silenced by council president. Took a while for council to recognize that only meetings twice a month in a piggyback style was a display of irresponsible government leadership by council president. The next became more apparent in a much shorter time as we recognized Councilman Revolt as the leader of the city council meetings. Watch Council President Peters as he mumbles and jumbles during meetings, now looking to his left instead of to his right for guidance. Not much limelight now for the law director during council meetings, but darn, he continues to add his hidden, hidden his tidbits whenever possible, such as commenting of the great negotiating during the deep old talks, trying to downplay Mr. Osborne's comments that cities are being held hostage by big business. Yes, we have fought the 215 jobs being created, but make no mistake, companies do hold government hostage in meeting their bottom line and respectable dividends to their stockholders. If not, North Canton, the 17th most livable city in Ohio, would have a main street bustling without the need for income tax breaks, DRDs and CRAs. It's a competitive world, and companies take what a city gives, and if it meets their needs, they stay, or else they look elsewhere. Then we had his comment last week during the water rate discussion, and the fact that a city employee with the longest tenure and the highest pay is the individual selected to turn on one's water on after their shut off. Mr. Fox, so be it. That's called labor negotiation, and perhaps you were part of the negotiating team that allowed that clause to be in the contract. But you know, North Canton city residents, never once a negative comment from those sitting before me on paying a council member for missed needs. Another example of that. Never. Double standards? Perhaps. Double standards. Some members miss six, seven times a year, but we continue to pay them. Not one afterthought of spending $150,000 for the movement of council chambers to the city center and subsequent expenses for the mounting and dismantling of equipment to facilitate various functions. So, 2019, and I'm in an election year, we are here in the D and D era of North Canton city government. Figured out D and D. Good, bad, the verdict is still out. However, two major issues loom in the limelight under a cloth of secrecy, but should be the highlight, highlight of this year's election. Tonight, let's deal with DRDs and later, upon return from break, Arrowhead Golf Course. Mr. Revolt, earlier this year, you spoke of hostilities within council chambers as a negative factor for one seeking employment as a council clerk. Councilman Revolt, Peters, or any other council person voting for the approval of DRDs or CRAs, answer one question. How many location finders seeking cities for their clients may have been turned away from North Canton because of government's inability to work with their biggest assets, city schools? As reported by Stark County Political Report with information provided by school officials, whereas city has maintained silence, city officials walked away, in effect being labeled as hypocrites from a May 29 meeting. I might add my opinion with egg in their face also. Glad to see and read school officials making a stand against DRDs. Thank you. Had a great 4th of July function, not only the parade, but the event at the community church with a special tribute to Mr. Bacon, Sam Bacon, that was really a nice event. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Tucker, Austin, 1307 February Street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I have to commiserate with Mrs. Brown, frustrations with the people that, I guess repeatedly don't pay their bills and have to be shut off and then turned back on. To remedy that, I would suggest rather than jacking up the rate for everybody, putting something in there that repeated shut offs and turn ons for the same person, maybe over a given period of time, have a, an escalating turn on rate, rather than jacking it up for everybody. You obviously have got a situation where people are struggling to pay their bills, or in a workplace that fell through the cracks, but to raise that to $100, like I said, they could be rectified by adjusting that policy for repeat offenders. So, that's the first thing I would address. As far as the discontinuing of permit for cement, I, well, first let me back up to this. I talked to Mr. Serrano earlier. I had to remind him that four or five years ago, it was the goal of the spotty to make that department self-sufficient, so you jack up all the fees. They can be a little hefty sometimes. An example, I wanted to put, replace plaster and layer in a bedroom of mine at home, and I was going to do some electrical work at the same time. I knew I would have the electrical permit, but a judgment call, somebody said, well, you also need a construction permit as well. I'm simply removing the wall covering and putting up a like covering it up. What are they going to do? Come back and say, hey, that's a nice color that you put up? There was no reason for that construction permit requirement, but I, I didn't quote the fees, combined fees were like $170. Clearly, more for the cost of my dryer. But I didn't quote. Cement is a major, major investment. It's very visible in the neighborhood. It's very costly. Homeowners need guidance. They need oversight from an independent party. To, to just remove the need for a permit is a long way to go. And now I hear from Mrs. Keesling, you're going to explore removing permits for other items in our code. They're going to make it so confusing, do I need a permit? Do I not need a permit? This is all the wrong way to go. You need people there who can seek guidance from the cities, some technical knowledge, and provide oversight. They should give you a drawing as to whether they're going to put this driveway or sidewalk, whatever it is, make them pick it as a replacement, make sure they're not going to expand it beyond the borders that are allowed. The city needs to have continued oversight of this. So, this is a long way to go. The ordinance, and I think, here was, is it 49, 2019, something? I never get a satisfactory explanation. You have already identified the dollar amount of money that you're moving. You must be moving it from a specific account to another account, so those full account numbers need to be detailed for the future, so you can track city finances. So, I still maintain the full account numbers, where it's coming from and where it's going to, need to be detailed on that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else question to address council? Okay, we see none, who will move on to whole business, may have a motion and a second to read by title only third reading, ordinance number 45-19. Some move. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Tim.
In ordinance amendment, chapter 111, council codified ordinance to the city of North Canton, specifically section 111.06, council meeting agenda amended in subsections A and B as described above.
Chair of the line, I'll send the motion and second.
Let's do it.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only third reading, ordinance number 46-19? Some move. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Tim.
In ordinance amendment, section 24, authorized manpower ordinance number 10-89, police personnel ordinance as amended to allow for additional personnel as needed to fill positions receiving funding from outside sources.
Thank you. So, third reading, Chief Manock was here to address us, answered our questions. Does he have a comment on that? Can I motion? Good answer. Motion. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Tim.
In ordinance amendment, section 24, authorized manpower ordinance number 10-89, police personnel ordinance as amended to allow for additional personnel as needed to fill positions receiving funding from outside sources.
Thank you. So, third reading, Chief Manock was here to address us, answered our questions. Does he have a comment on that? Can I motion? Good answer. Motion. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Tim.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A resolution pursuant to North Canton codified ordinance section one-one-eight-one-point-zero-four, requesting the planning commission review, consider, and recommend or not recommend council's proposal to amend section one-one-eight-one-point-zero-eight action by city council regarding amended zoning ordinances.
Chairman Keisler.
Yes, we are sending this off to planning to look at our recommendation to remove subsections B and C from that part of the ordinance in conflict with section two-point-oh-five in our charter. I motion made up.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to read by title only first reading resolution ten-dash-nineteen. Some move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
A resolution request the planning commission recommend the city council amendments to North Canton codified ordinance chapter one-one-three-three, single-family and two-family residential district regulations, section one-one-three-three-point-zero-eight accessory use regulations, subsection E fences and walls, and include language for fence heights and flagpole height placement requirements.
Thank you. Chairman Keisler.
Again, we're going to send this off to planning commission so they can give us a little recommendation as our current ordinances are outdated. I motion made up.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You on a new business? They have a motion and a second to read by title only first reading ordinance number fifty-one-dash-nineteen.
Second.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
Ordinance authorizing the director of administration of the city of North Canton advertise received bids according to specification is now on file in the director's office and authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton on board control approval to enter to a contract for complete reconstruction of East Hill Southeast, including new concrete curb and gutter, concrete driveway aprons, catch basin, storm sewer system, and full depth asphalt pavement, together with an alternative bid price for sidewalk construction on the south side of the street and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Fox.
So we talked about this, it's pretty self-explanatory. Just recap, it's one-point-two-million-dollar project and Rob was able to give us a grant eight-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, the rest we had in the budget, and so I moved that we pass it on an emergency.
I had a question real quick.
Yeah.
Good. Is there a time constraint on this?
Uh, no. Uh, we, well, we have like a year and a half to spend the OPWC money.
Wait, as far as passing is?
For the grants before.
Uh.
That's what I'm saying, I'm asking for the next ordinance because I'm, you know, I was a note builder and there's, there's only six big figures. Yeah, I guess I just want to make sure that, you know, I know what, uh, what your timeline is on this.
I would like to sell it yet this summer, maybe August. Award in August, early September with a, basically a June fifteenth to June thirtieth twenty-twenty completion date, I think we'll get a very good price if, if we go that route to, to sell it now, but a later completion date or something like that.
I'm for the project, I guess my question is if it doesn't pass on emergency tonight, does that put you in a bind for any grant, uh, opportunities we have from North Canton?
For both fifty-one and fifty-two?
Yes, it's on that.
Fifty-two is not an emergency.
We would be okay with the OPWC. I did find out today that, that, uh, another grant I put in for, it was, it's unofficial, but it looks like we got another two-hundred thousand, and that one would just simply take the latter if it went into next year. So it's like we've got a million and forty thousand.
Okay. No, you're okay.
I would encourage council to adopt fifty-one two thousand nineteen on emergency tonight. Given the fact that the ordinance, current ordinance will allow the sidewalks, we don't have time to come back, he's just, all he wants to do is sell it, let's come back and then we can take the first reading or the table that's what they'd like to do, which is still, it allows you to sell it, that's really what we're after.
And, and what we're looking at too, and I should talk this, is it, as the ordinance says, an alternate bid for sidewalk, so we don't have to order that, we're getting a price to construct the, the cement portion.
Let's give them the authorization to bid it, we'll come back and make the policy later, because again, we're going to have to, we're going to have to go through the process of the ordinance bidding.
Well, that's my intent, I don't want to be a no-boat and lose a grant opportunity for North Canton, I mean, I see the merit in sidewalks, that's a, just, uh, you know, we discussed what we did last week, but when I see that we only have six members here, if I'm a no-boat and you need it, it's not going to happen unless I decide, because it's a grant, which I probably wouldn't move forward with, but, uh, just want to make that clarity so we all know where we're at.
Downhill is what we're after tonight.
Okay. Okay, so if we just have the first reading on fifty-two.
That would be fine.
And you're okay through the process, that's my, that's, that was my point. Coming up.
Yes, yes.
So forth.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, there's a motion on the floor.
So, so.
I'll second that.
Yeah, so I just made a motion, he seconded that we get the sign as emergency.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, now, entertain a motion and second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for fifty-one nineteen. Some move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and finally, motion and second to adopt under suspension. Some move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. They have a motion and a second to read by title only first reading ordinance number fifty-two-dash-nineteen.
Some move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Remember, false, no.
An ordinance amending chapter nine-oh-two sidewalk policy of codified ordinance of the city of North Canton specifically amending section nine-oh-two-point-zero-one installation sidewalks and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you. Chairman Fox.
So, this is the one we talked about last week where it says, you know, uh, ordinance fifty-two, that we switched it from two to three to just one, uh, so that, uh, you know, as we go forward with making improvements, of course, on East Hill, we wanted to be able to get that south side of the sidewalk done, uh, so we could make our interman actors better. So I move that, we have an opposed, let's move forward with it.
First reading.
Okay, the first reading, I thought it was on emergency.
It is.
You don't have to suspend the rules.
Okay, so let's read the first reading.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Remember, false, opposed? Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to read by title only first reading ordinance number fifty-three-dash-nineteen.
Some move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
An ordinance amending chapter nine-three-seven water rates of codified ordinances of the city of North Canton specifically section nine-three-seven-point-zero-three, nine-three-seven-point-zero-four, nine-three-seven-point-zero-seven, and nine-three-seven-point-zero-nine and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Brown.
Yes, we talked about this last week, this is to curtail the multiple offenders of starting and stopping. I do think though, Mr. Aldorf's, uh, comments are something that we can revisit, if this does not do what we want it to do, and that is to curtail, curtail that, so I think that we don't have any other discussion on that, I move that we go ahead and approve this in the first reading.
I just wanted to say real quick, uh, what he said, it makes sense to me too, that the repeat offenders are, they should, instead of making a rule for everybody, if you write the rules after a few times, then you should pay the penalty, I think, so maybe revisit it again and see how the progress is.
Well, this rate does put us in line even, we're still behind some of the other communities that, so it's not like we're gouging people, we're printing up the code for the majority of people that are out there, so, but again, if this doesn't actually curtail what we are actually trying to do, and the cost of, for our people going and out, and I still would like to add, the fact that someone needs to be there when we do turn it back on, I think that, that's got to be a must, that's something we can revisit, but, uh, I do think this is a good thing to get us up to speed and, and also try to curtail, uh, the issue that we have. Any other comments?
In terms of term, we're passing this on emergency, so you're passing what we spoke about last week.
Right.
Okay.
And just to, to add, we did consider at different points when we were discussing this, doing some sort of, you know, increasing scale for repeat offenders, but there'd be a lot of tracking with that, and also in talking with the staff that goes out in the field and shuts off, they didn't feel like it would be any more of a deterrent, typically these folks are just putting their credit card to get turned back on, and then two, three months later we may see them again. Also, keep in mind that somebody that's a first-time issue or they're really struggling, we do work with people, you know, as much as the ordinance is allowed, again, they've gotten two months' worth of bills plus a delinquent notice, and, you know, we'll let them pay the past due, we'll do different things to try to help out as much as we can within the law. But it is something we can, you know, we can kind of try to keep track of who, how many repeat offenders we have versus first time, if we can report back to you and that.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance fifty-three-dash-nineteen.
Some move.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules, ordinance fifty-three-dash-nineteen.
Some move.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to read by title only first reading ordinance number fifty-four-dash-nineteen.
Some move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of eighty thousand dollars of the city of North Canton funds from the unappropriated resources of the water fund for costs related to a water main break and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Laura, is that the final tally or are we still waiting for invoices?
No, we've received all the invoices that we're going to get, eighty thousand is a little bit high, but we had to get the agenda out before we had all invoices in hand, but that also gives us a little bit of a cushion as Mr. Hill is still, um, looking into stocking more supplies and parts so that if this is something ever happened again, we would have more things on hand.
Specifically that couple that they had flying.
Right. Okay. Things that had been pumped in and, um, the things that, you know, we just didn't have on hand, so this covers some of that restocking, this covers Winger excavating that came over and helped out, reimbursing City of Canton for the, you know, things that they helped out with, um, as well as that company that trucked in parts and their labor and freight as well.
Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion and a second to adopt first reading.
Some move. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings.
Some move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules. Some move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only first reading ordinance number fifty-five-dash-nineteen?
Some move.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
An ordinance authorizing the use of a then-and-now certificate for expenses related to repair of a water main break and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Yes, Laura, can you touch on that, why we need that one more time, since it's worth asking on a basis?
Sure, um, a then-and-now purchase order just means that the purchase order that is in your packet to Thompson Piper, that's the company that trucked in parts overnight, um, that purchase order was entered in the morning after the break was found, so obviously it was entered after we'd already obligated ourselves for the purchase, so that's not to the letters of the law, so what you do is issue a then-and-now purchase order, meaning I stamped it then-and-now, we had the money, when we obligated ourselves, we'll have it when we pay it, and that just covers us and the rest here in the law.
They won't do that one?
And we, and just one other thing, sorry, correct, the other costs like to Canton and wire and some of the things we mentioned, we were able to cover those with existing, um, blanket POs that we had open, and then the eighty thousand will just replenish those POs for our regular supplies that we purchased earlier.
I motion made up.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings.
Some move.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
Some move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to read by title only first reading ordinance number fifty-six-dash-nineteen.
Some move.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
An ordinance amending chapter nine-oh-two sidewalk policy of codified ordinances of the city of North Canton specifically amending sections nine-oh-two-point-zero-two, existing sidewalks, nine-oh-two-point-zero-three, new sidewalks, and nine-oh-two-point-zero-four participation voluntary requirements and qualify as described below.
Thank you, Chairman Fox.
So we talked about that last week and went back and forth a little bit, um, they said participation, so if you're a participator, you want to participate voluntarily, um, I had three questions and this made me think about, one was, this would be appropriate for Rob or whoever, uh, what would be the typical cost of a pad, you know, so you have a, you know, fifty-foot or twenty-five-foot or whatever pad, you may not know the answer now, but that would be one thing, so we have an understanding if we need a minimum of fifty square feet or three pads, you know, uh, I don't know if we're talking fifteen hundred dollars, three thousand dollars.
Good rule, thumb number for sidewalk is ten bucks per square foot, so a pad is roughly five-by-five, so two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Okay. So that helps us understand if we get three pads, what the cost would be. The second question is, um, for Laura, this was just a thought, so if you read the E, it says the property owners will be responsible for their full payment, not later than thirty days after the work is done, so, um, I'm assuming I'm voluntarily asking the city to consider my pads to be replaced, so I assume maybe I have the money, but let's say that I was more worried about a safety issue, so I just want that to be fixed, and I don't really have the money, so I need six pads, uh, is it possible to have a short-term agreement for twelve months at a two percent, that we have twelve months to pay that back, our portion as a homeowner, and if not, then, so the money comes back in replenished the next year, the next year, and so forth, that we put some money into it, and the question is, is if we do that, at say a low interest rate, two percent for twelve months instead of thirty days, then it, it would be more user-friendly, number one, number two, if they can't get paid twelve months, then you could then put the tax assessment or lien against the property at that time, and then the third thing for Laura would be, is in twelve months after the program starts, because I hate to do programs that never do anything like CRA, we had CRAs, but they weren't utilized properly, so in this, your sidewalk program is geared to get problems solved timely, and so in twelve months from now, let's say you come back to council and you say, okay, it's been twelve months now, this is what's, what's accomplished, is, all right, is anybody using the program, and if not, then I want to revise it, but those are the three questions I have. So if you guys have some, what, what needs?
Come, this is the first reading, we can add that in our discussions as we move forward, because I think there's some merit to that.
Yeah, as I'm processing, I think those three things should be looked at, so however we need to do it, I just, you know, I need your input too.
Well, if, um, if finance and law and, and when pad returns on the second reading, why don't we have them review those questions, um, we can break back into committee before we have the second reading.
Yeah, I think question one with the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per pad, that's good, because you know, if you don't know that, it might be, oh, and the final thing is, let's say code enforcement goes out and says, you know what, Doug, your sidewalk was pretty bad, it's a rental property, it's a commercial property for your own home, and you're not voluntarily doing it because you're laid off right now, so you really aren't drawing the red flag, but they say go ahead and do it, so it's not voluntary, so what happens then, do they make, make you pay a hundred percent of it, or is it fifty-fifty spread, which I think it should be at least fifty-fifty spread, so these are just a couple of things that cropped in my head over the course of last week.
Certainly merits compensation, or more compensation, but we can do that on committee. Yeah.
Eric, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do, um, you know, I, I have, uh, this is a rule we're here, she telling them so right, it never doubt, and I am highly skeptical that this is going to work, but to Chuck's comment and to Larry's, one of the beautiful things about local government is we can experiment, we're not actually putting this on stone tablets, we can play with it, we can look at it, but I want to caution everybody again that, uh, we used to do curbs and gutters by assistance, we didn't, we walked away from it for a reason. In our conversations last week, I think we were talking about how unlikely it would be, or at least when we was talking to Koochie about pads, he said it would be more than likely that we would probably do three, three pads by the time we gang them out, so let's think about what that real number is, that homeowner is going to, is going to take. The other element is this, is that also in this provision, is that if I replace a pad, we're going to make you take down a tree that's causing a problem.
Right.
That's going to be a grant, right? Or more, depending upon the size of the tree.
Probably more.
Probably more. So, I think what I'm trying to say is that I can see these costs rapidly spiraling beyond the reach of your average taxpayer, so the downside, you may not be able to get a check in thirty days.
Exactly.
And I think we need to really give that some thought, uh, in the larger context, and I'm willing to support this, I'll be reluctant, I mean, as an experiment, is this the path, when we really look at the numbers, and we really want the numbers path, the pun intended.
Think about the utilities too, because you have a water line, it's, the, the box is right in the sidewalk, so who has to pay the box cost for the shut-offs, sometimes you're in the, you have gas shut-off in the, uh, concrete, so, I mean, I know now Dominion, they're taking care of a lot of the cost of the door now, but there's a lot of times where that's the homeowner's responsibility from your front door to the street or to public right-of-way, so, I mean, those are little unknown things, I'm sure that will be discovered through the course of this experiment, but my thinking is, is that if we at least go back in twelve months, revisit it, see how successful it is, see what the bugs look like, and then we'll revise it, because my plan is probably a little different than what we just discussed.
Let's, let's keep this in mind, what this is actually for, right now, it's not working, we have a lot of sidewalks that need, so that whatever we have now in the system, we have to do something, it's just going to get worse and worse, and if you walk enough times, you'll see that there's some, like I had mentioned before, you can't even get a stroller over, or that's going to definitely wake up the base list of them, um, so this is just more of a, kind of a push to see what we, how far we can go with it, you know, we put a hundred thousand dollars, they have to, to apply for it, if the nuisance person says that they need it, they're either going to have to do it now anyways on their own, or they're going to have to apply for fifty percent, which one would you rather do, if you're the person who couldn't afford it, you would want the fifty percent, wouldn't you?
If I felt there was a payment plan option, because I don't.
Again, that would be something we'd need to revisit, yeah.
Because I'm personally, I mean, I have a thousand laying around to take care of, because I'm keeping my family and I got the priority insurance and so forth.
So where this comes down to it, are we going to do anything about what we're seeing right now, and this is just something, I, I'd like to see this, I hope it works, I'm, you know, again, it's an, it's an experiment, we don't have to stay with it, if it's not working, we're not always right, but this is a nice idea to start and see what we can do and put that out there for people.
I agree.
Especially if we want nuisance person to go around and say you can fix it.
Well, I just think if we trust three or four of those questions, that would give us some more flexibility, make it more realistic, and we reassess, reevaluate twelve months.
Good. Clearly, there's still some discussion, again, that we want to have on that, so we'll bring it back up on committee upon our, uh, ease.
I move we done.
As for tonight, let's have the first reading ordinance, all favor?
Aye.
Your second, or no, it's her second, I'm second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, if I made a suggestion about the payment claim, although there was some comments that, uh, my opinions aren't welcome, that's actually one of the main roles of the law director, the attorney, his opinion for the law, so here, I just wanted to point out that one of the first things that you can think about is, if, if someone has to enter a payment claim for a sidewalk, there's probably some likelihood that some of those are going to fail, but because this is part of a public improvement, we would be able to, if, if necessary, uh, be able to lien property as we do on some other things for public utilities or permitting for a public improvement, so we'd hate to have a situation where we put in a brand-new sidewalk, someone asks for a payment plan on that, they sell the property, that, uh, so lien, yeah, that lien is going to remain with the property, and so the new owner going in is going to have to saddle, settle up with that lien or maybe do that, um, at, at closing, and so if there's an adjustment, I'm sure you're aware of.
Title search.
Uh, that, the other type.
Yes.
Result that, so the city's repaid, um, and the, uh, the accounts are cleared.
Yeah, I think it's a good plan, give them a little time to pay if they can, then it's very technical to get our money back.
All right, Louina, they have a motion and a second to read by title only first reading resolution thirteen-dash-nineteen.
Some move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A resolution request the planning commission review, consider, and propose to city council amendments in North Canton codified ordinance chapter eleven-seventy-one administrative powers and duties specifically section eleven-seventy-one-point-zero-six, schedule of fees for paying maintenance fees for cement work on private property and the public right-of-way.
Thank you, Chairman Keisler.
I will refer to my vice chair, Mark, since he worked diligently on this.
Yes, this is the, uh, the fee we had met with the, kind of the representatives, with Darryl, Dom, and myself, and, um, we came up with a plan to make it more community-friendly and construction-friendly to get some of this stuff done, we were finding our fees were as much as the actual concrete itself when we put it in, so we, we looked at, uh, different communities around us and we took some, uh, of the contractors' suggestions and came up with a pretty good plan, I think we had talked about and discussed this, whereas if it's on your personal property, we won't do an inspection on that, but if it's in the right-of-way, we, that's our, our section, we're concerned about that, of course, um, we will do an inspection, it, puts a lot more on the contractors and the residents, if they don't do it right, easily they will be pulled out, and, and they've got to know that what they can do, it's, they're still the policy of two feet from, you know, the size and all the other regulations, it's just, we won't get an inspector to go out there two times and be sure that they did have that. Any other questions?
No.
I just want to clarify, I remember it as they are replacing what's already there on their property, not placing a new pad, I mean, like that, that would be hard.
So if they, if they went.
And they're just replacing the private, it's already there.
Um, I'm not sure if that's the, that's exactly in that, the wording with that, um, Pat's not here, but if, if they are charged of putting in what is in the ordinance, you know, we can't be two feet away and all, and all that, so there is a, so just put exactly what is there, I don't think that's, that's the meant, the, the mental, Dom, yours?
The recollection was, it's the, it's inside the property file briefs.
Right.
And it meets the normal standard, and if it's in the footprint and they're replacing it, that's not going to be an issue, if for some reason they want to go alongside of the house, then they have to conform to the two-foot rule or the five-foot rule.
Old rules that we have in place, but we don't have an inspection for that, see that.
But if you get into where you're in the sidewalks, the approach, or in the city amusement area, then that's when it has to be, everything has to be a double, triple check.
Laura.
Yes, Laura.
The next resolution fourteen addresses the zoning certificate. And from my reflection, it would be that if it was something adding new, that you need zoning inspections to make sure that you're not over the percentage of cement versus grass.
Okay.
And there's a packet with all the ordinances underneath with a paper clip on it. Probably the second, yeah, it should be the second.
So that's one, that's one of the ones that you wanted to add on to their...
Yes, right.
So if you don't add on, just replacing.
Correct, get this one, get this, and that's what I...
I motion we adopt.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. We have a motion and a second to spread the rules of council for three readings.
No, I think each is a resolution, so...
Where am I at? Oh, I'm on the wrong one, I'm sorry. Okay, yep, that's good.
It's going over to the planning.
Yes. Motion and a second to read by title on the first reading, Resolution fourteen dash nineteen. So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Both, motion carries, Tim.
A resolution requesting the planning commission review, consider, and propose to city council amendments in North Canton's codified ordinances, chapter eleven seventy-three, procedures for zoning certificates and certificates of occupancy, specifically section eleven seventy-three point zero two, zoning certificate required.
So this is your one, yeah.
Mark.
This is the one you were intending to, and again, it's going to the planning commission, so they're gonna have to deliver it all back to them. But this is a, this is what we discussed last week, come down that first one.
I motion we adopt.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Okay, we have a motion and a second to read by title on the first reading, Resolution fifteen dash nineteen. So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Both, motion carries, Tim.
A resolution requesting the planning commission review, consider, and propose to city council an amendment to North Canton's codified ordinances, chapter eleven seventy-three, procedures for zoning certificates and certificates of occupancy, to include a new section, eleven seventy-three point zero seven, administrative waiver requests.
Thank you, Chair, Chair McKeese.
Yes, this is another resolution we're sending over to planning to consider the new chapter in the code regarding the administrative waiver requests. And it's all written here in our little packet. Any questions, concerns, we talked about it, and what we talked about in planning. Okay, I motion we send over.
And that was with last week, because these are resolutions purely ceremony, for the same reading.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Kate Porch, Deputy Director, Farina.
Thank you. Well, a good July fourth, you know, having successful events in our city. It's really been coordination and collaboration with other community groups. So big kudos to the YMCA for the successful race. They had two thousand one hundred and fifty-five participants this year in the forty-sixth annual race. So that's, their very first year, they had a hundred and fifty runners. So two thousand one hundred and fifty-five, although they had over two hundred children aged two to six in the firecracker dash. So it's kind of like starting to help and wellness out young in our youngest residents. And also, big kudos to the JCs for organizing the parade. That was a really successful attendance in the parade, everything went well. And then the fireworks, if anyone went to the fireworks, a huge attendance there, and without incidents. So that was really nice to see. So all of that going on, as well as we have nominations going on with the new Pride, Pride, Co-Red Pride North Canton that we have. It's a nomination for anyone that notices, you know, well-kept businesses or residences in the community through the forums online. And those are coming in, and then the certificates of recognition are going out to people just to continue to keep our city looking nice. Surveys are also continuing to roll in, so if you haven't taken it, get it done. You can take it online on the website, on the Facebook page, or you can send it immediately as well. We're gonna continue to, or we're gonna begin to start the council change move. So that actually will start tomorrow. The tech crew will come in to take down all of the audio, all the video equipment, and clear the town. So all goes well during the break, we'll have it all up and running, and the next time we meet, it will not be here. That's all that I can help with.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I guess I just want to report that our high-profile Apple Grove Repay Project, it's a joint project we're doing with Stark County Engineer, that's currently out to bid. We're gonna open bids in this room next Friday, July nineteenth, and hope to get a good number, and get that awarded, and get that paid at this call. And that's also gonna include the North Main and Apple Grove intersection. Obviously, that's quite frankly an embarrassment, but we had to wait for the grants to get it in. We're gonna take care of that as well with this project. Other than that, we're gonna stay busy the next few weeks, and keep doing it. The barrel's covered.
Rob, the square?
Yes, okay. I just want to go to two items. The first one is that we did, we had really a large attendance at Doug and Chrissy Taylor. There was some absent who had passed away, it's just a heartbreaking calling hours and funeral. And what was really nice about it is they had tremendous support. But we also had the city fire department, I think every member of the fire department was in attendance, and also a number of our police officers. And they provided an honor guard for the casket, which is where you have two of the men and women that are in their uniform, and they stand at the foot and the head of the casket for the entire calling hours. And they would change ceremoniously, change every fifteen minutes. And that was organized by Jason Myers, who is a fire medic in the city of North Canton. He did a great job organizing it, he had plenty of people to participate in that, and the family greatly appreciated it. And they just had an outpouring of support. So it was just, it really was very moving to see the community come together in such a heartbreaking situation. And Doug, Chrissy Taylor were greatly appreciative. And also the support that they got administratively for the things that they had to address, Laura Brown, and Shanna, Kathy, and Tam, Patrick, were just very responsive and understanding because, you know, for different issues that had to come in prior to the ball ceremony. So just really proud of our city staff and the fire and EMS personnel, because they were all there, and they did a great job of doing the other for that. And then also, the parade was a great event. I think, you know, you judge it by the amount of candy that we sent out. That ran out, like, at least my bag, well sooner than expected. But, you know, it was covered the whole way. We had a lot of people, a lot of participation. But what was really nice is we had a lot of great comments about how clean the city streets are. You know, so we've done a good job keeping the streets clean, the street sweeper. We've got, you know, new curbs and gutter in a lot of places, which makes a big difference. And then also, I wanted to give you all an update on the private security cameras. So when residents get, let's say, a Ring camera, or any of the other cameras you can buy for your house, what we've done is we're going to have the registration program. So our police chief, John Minoff, has a free registration program. So if we have residents in the city that want to sign up and they register their cameras, the cameras that they own at their house, they can register it. And what it does, it allows the police department, if they have a crime in that area, it allows them to go and be able to access the footage in the event that they are investigating a crime, or a break-in of some type. And so we're working with the city of Canton, because they have this program, and also the Stark County Auditor, because they help manage the system through their GIS. So it just allows us access to hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of other cameras throughout the city, to residents that have, if you sign up, you can go to northcantonohio, it is, northcantonohio.gov forward slash police, and you can sign up. And if you sign up, there's no, what's that?
Not yet, it's not on yet.
Okay, it's coming out. So then what you do is you sign up, and if anybody wants to be a part of it, there's no cost. And then, you know, if you want to withdraw from the emergency, you can do that too. So a better idea to keep the community safe.
All right, all. Eric, your final.
Thank you. On the finance side of things, the comprehensive annual financial report was finished up in June by June deadline. That was submitted off to a national accounting organization, we reviewed it as we do every year. We also wrapped up our annual financial audit. Our auditors were here in May, wrapped up their work in June. And that audit was submitted to the state auditor's office by July first, which is required. And so then the auditor's office will take a look at that, and hopefully release that to the public in the next couple of months. We're also taking a look at our budget, because we're midway through the year now, it's hard to believe, but halfway through twenty nineteen. So we're going through line by line and checking anything that looks to be a little out of the ordinary, and we'll get back to all our department heads on that, if there's anything they need to be concerned about, or obviously council when we come back and the ball. On a council side of things, while you guys are on break, we are going to take a very close look at record management, meaning how are all our records kept for council, the minutes, the ordinances, all of those things. We've had some suggestions from some people in the communities and residents, which has been nice in the past. And we're also looking at, what does the law say, what are best practices, so that we can have everything neat and organized and easy to find. We're also taking a look at agenda management software. I have our other intern, not this Ben, the other Ben intern, Ben Nist, working on finding a big list for me of companies that provide that software. And what that can do is sort of help automate the process, instead of manually putting together packets and inserting and removing things, like the three that Mr. Bolt reminded us we forgot today, which we appreciate. It would be all managed through the software. And again, going back to that record management, and keeping all those documents safe and secure. So we're gonna look into that, hopefully get some quotes and some demos, that we could bring that back to council and the ball, and maybe incorporate that for twenty twenty's budget. If that's something that you guys would be interested in. Have you been seeing they have the technology where you guys could vote on a tablet, and it could instantly show on the screen, things like that? It could add it to the video, where if someone wanted to know exactly what minute we talked about, either fifteen, they could click on it, and it would take them to that point in the video, things like that. That would modernize a little bit. That's all I have.
Make the board. Eric, your last.
Yes. I read a statistic recently that said that more dogs and cats are lost on the Fourth of July than any other day of the year. And whether or not that's correct, it is clear that our local humane society and dog wardens are versing at the seams. So if you've lost your dog, your cat, please contact Humane Society, Dog Wardens. They are versing at the seams, they are at capacity, they have capillary kennels set up. And even if you haven't lost your dog or cat, please visit, perhaps you may come home with a friend.
Is this a legal opinion?
It is, highly agreeable.
Number four.
Uh, yes, just a few things, I'll piggyback on what the mayor said about the festival. And I'm gonna say, in essence, the last several weeks, we've had a library fun night. We had, you know, the parades, the race. And I had a lot of good comments about how beautiful City Hall is, by the way, because of all the hydrangeas and everything, and the park next to us here. So a lot of people, and there were some people from out of town, they were asking, "How did you guys get this set up in the first place?" But I didn't realize it was forty-some years in the past and everything. So a lot of people would like to have exactly what we have there, so it really runs really well with that. Also, we had a Christmas, I want to call it winter holiday meeting this past week. And what that was entailed in is that we're looking already at what we're gonna do when the Christmas tree lighting and that weekend kind of thing. There've been some suggestions of having some sort of a winter fest weekend, a Saturday. So the chamber's kind of involved in a little bit, the library's a little involved in it. We talked about things like blow up characters, and more characters that night going around, even from Frozen and so on, and we're looking at getting donations for that. So I'm telling you this, because we're already talking about what we're going to do for that moving forward. And it does take, you know, a lot of time to get that set up and everything. So also, along with that, we're looking at a couple of people that are, I guess we're interested in lighting up the town a little bit more during that time. Last year, we tried to light up some of the buildings with green, red, even blue, and it didn't come out, nobody really noticed it. But we had some people that came to us and said, "We can do it better." So tomorrow night, actually, they're gonna test it out. So if anybody's not busy, I know I'll be about Main Street Grill, Turkish Darke, about nine-thirty, ten, and ten, he's gonna put some lights on, this gentleman, on the poles, and see if it lights up, you know, our town like we want it to. And if that is the case, it's more than just the holiday time, like during the Fourth of July or Memorial Day. We can make it red, white, blue. So we can do a lot of different things with this, and we'll be looking at some donors for that also. But we'll see how, where that comes out. So if anyone's interested in putting their opinion, see if it works tomorrow, you know, as soon as it gets dark right outside Main Street Grill, the gentleman will be there probably an hour or two, or earlier setting up. So that's something that could be really cool. And then coming down through here, I want to give kudos to the St. Paul's for finishing up West Maple Street. I don't know if anybody noticed that. They did a nice landscaping job along West Maple Street. So Paul Beinlick was kind of representative, we were going back and forth on that. And I thought it was bad, especially for the holiday weekend that we had. Also, if you didn't notice, we added a playhouse to the directional sign at Seventh Street and made, the playhouse is adding on, they've been after us for some time now to add playhouse to the arrows, so to show people where it's at. So we did get that done down there, you'll notice that. And I also want to kudos to Brian Hill for a lot of different things that he does, the water thing there. And, you know, we had a little issue with flags falling on, and I want to give kudos to the administration and the mayor for their response on the flag issue down at the Gold Star. You know, fun with flags there, but it was very, it was, we put those flags up, of course, and with no disrespect, in fact, we put it up with the highest respect, first the gold circle, or the gold members there. And so I want to give them credit for jumping on that and getting that straight away. And we don't try to do things like that. And when there's something that we've noticed that may not be in line with the kind of things that we do in this community, we will take care of that. So kudos for your getting on that very quick. And that is also Brian Hill, is trying to work with that also. And that's it for me. Have a good break, Eric.
Member of all.
First of all, is on July fourth, we had an opportunity to walk past the Glenwood Southeast Pickleball Courts, which are not available, because there were a hundred people gathered in the morning to play pickleball. I suggested the path, and we look at having a kiosk built, so our local restaurants can put up an ad or whatever, so we can hopefully capture some of that morning traffic. I'd like, hopefully, we'll have more of the Stark County events there. But it was pretty hard to see that people out on a pretty hot morning using one of our parks. So maybe as we look at budget as well, another question might be, Doug, what else do we need there beside water or pipeline? You know, if we're gonna use this thing, so. One other note is, I'd like to, if I can, Mark's coming up about the events that make the community great. And the law directors come in about losing cats and dogs on July fourth. I'd like to offer a general correction to the law director, that here in North Canton, there was a time, once, when we lost more cats and dogs than at the Fourth of July. And that was the night that W H B C broadcast live. A certain mayor leading the community in Christmas caroling. Many of those dogs or cats did return for donations, I told you. And it was the only time that that mayor was invited to lead the community in song. So that...
I know.
You go ahead and excuse him.
Thank you. Eric McKeese.
Number four.
Eric Fonte.
I was hearing all the Fourth of July activities, we had a beautiful day. The traffic and the people were lined all over the place. It was great. And I know they had the food event vendors and the band on Seventh Street, which was great. You know, it was just such a nice, well-rounded weekend. Not to mention the flags, they were so nice going down the street. So that's a nice fact. And then the final thing is, don't forget about the Seven Twenty Group, which is gonna be right here downtown Saturday.
Yes, I'm glad you brought it up.
I was waiting, I'm eliminating my things as you guys can go around.
It's gonna be the biggest.
This is right here.
This is gonna be big.
Go ahead and talk about it in a minute.
Glad you brought it, because I forgot it. We're not gonna need to get it until, you know, it's a couple of weeks out. It's over one hundred food truck vendors, bakers, bakers, brewer, growers. It's gonna be big, it's right here, it's in the St. Paul's parking lot, and then it'll fill out on East Maple. There's going to be a stage with bands playing continuously. It's from nine-thirty in the morning until three-thirty P M. That's Saturday, July twentieth, Seven Twenty on Seven Twenty. It's called Seven Twenty, because it's eight-four-four-seven to mo, that's how she started it. And so there's gonna be the food trucks lined up, they'll be coming down West Maple, they'll be on Main Street. And then there will be, for the first time ever, a little more of an expanded beer garden. So we got the permits for that, and there'll be an area designated for the craft beer area.
Across the street, over and over district.
So we bring your own blanket, there'll be bands playing, there'll be people eating, drinking, and buying, and it's gonna be good.
No more.
Yeah, and kudos to our street crew, too. Brian Hill's group with the summer workers, they do a great job. But Mike Battershell, we give him and his crew credit for closing the streets, opening the streets. They work so hard on these holidays, they don't get a day off, and they keep everything moving really smoothly. And with the parade, and all those participants trying to go down Seventh and get into the lot, they did a great job.
Okay, the remainder of the meeting's scheduled for August nineteenth, we'll be back from committee, the whole meeting, followed by August twenty-sixth, the regular council meeting. Final call for new business to councilmen. See you now, our ten motion, so moved. Second. All favor.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Motion carries.
Maybe not right here, you can have a location.
What?